...to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this time before we start regular business, we have some students here who would like to show their appreciation to the Board of Education for all that they do for Eden Schools. Nala, you're in charge.
Can you describe what you have because a lot of people can't see it.
Really good ones too.
Oh, you've already seen them?
Yeah, one fell out, I'm sorry.
Make sure that's false.
A red one, I had to eat it.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's also some other things that are, that are, have been handed out by kids that I can see. Our request, request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. Routine actions, approval of consensus items, recommended motion, the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum. It's A through N.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. If there's anyone that wants to speak now, there's two minutes.
New business, resignations. Recommended motion, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the registration of cleaner Kristen Moreno be accepted effective September 18th, 2013. Note that Mr. Moreno resigned in order to accept a teacher aid position.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Appointments, all appointments will not be effective and service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Recommended motions, appoint part-time science teacher, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Stephen Dillsworth, who is initially certified in teacher earth science, be appointed as a part-time .33 FTE teacher in the science tenure area effective October 17th, 2013 through June 30th, 2014. Salary is based upon ETA contract step one.
Discussion?
Do you need any conversation? It's not a new position.
How's it not?
He's been in as a per diem substitute since the beginning of the year because Keith Crombie left to go to another district as an administrator and we actually recalled the teacher on him. This is what's left over.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Appoint clerk typist, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Cheryl Stevens be appointed on probation as a clerk typist effective October 17th, 2013 through April 16th, 2014. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level five, step one. This is a replacement clerk typist in the transportation department due to transfers. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Mike, can I just say something? Or Mr. Burns, can I say something? We just want to say congratulations and since the fall's within my section, I just want to say we're very excited to have you here, so welcome.
Well, well, who is it? Can they stand up because I can't.
She can't see you.
Thank you.
I thought it was somebody up front.
Did a great job in the end.
Thank you.
That starts effective tomorrow.
Starts tomorrow, bright and early. Approved change in hours, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the hours for transportation personnel be adjusted effective September 18th, 2013 as presented.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Approved creation of fiddle club, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a junior senior high fiddle club group be created and that Mrs. Martella be appointed as volunteer advisor for the 2013-2014 school year.
Discussion? Is there any cost to that?
No. It's just completely student-led with a volunteer advisor.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Approved creation of apex coordinator position, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the position of apex coordinator be approved on the supplemental activities list at step seven.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Approved sign replacement, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the sign at Eden Elementary School be replaced with a digital sign keeping the existing structuring intact. The installation date is anticipated to be prior to June 2014. That's true.
Discussion?
Did everybody get a chance to see it up on the screen? That is a rendering, can you put it back up? So that is just a rendering, it is due for lots of different work, but just to explain it, this is going to be completely driven by community funds with the help of the chamber and the community foundation and a number of other people who have already put some money into it. But basically what they want to do is to leave the existing structure as part of the historic nature of the elementary school, but to change the digital sign to make it more safe and more efficient to have messages. It started as a conversation and shared decision-making a number of years ago because it was a safety issue to try to move the glass or the plexiglass at the time. And we're really very excited about what it's come to is that the banner board on the top of it that looks beige can actually match, it's painted, so it can actually match the color of the Tudor on the building. And then what they do is they scrape out the letters for the Eden School, so we can pick how big we want that banner to be, leaving space below it for four lines, two lines, whatever the size of the font is on the messages. And it's a completely wireless system, so we can designate people from wherever the master board is or the computer board is to change that sign and actually advertise for Boys and Girls Club or any other not-for-profit organization in Eden, which will be very, very helpful and very nice. Do we have a list of the people that donated for that or is it anonymous? The donations right now have not come in, we're just simply approving that from the board that the sign could be replaced and then once all the donations are in, then you would accept the donations for the sign. Because we have not solicited funds yet, those that have come in have just come in on their own. Have we paid anything yet on it? No, we won't pay anything. We don't even have a vendor yet.
And actually, we don't solicit any of the funds at all. It is totally a community event, the community's raising funds, so we'll accept the funds and the amount that they've actually raised. There will be no cost to the district whatsoever. And then, once it's finished, we'll have an actual value of what the sign would be too.
Will the sign still be used just for district purposes?
No. It would, it would be, it would be used for approved community events by the board as well. So the board could take a list of all the not-for-profits in the, in the community that it chose to advertise for and then it would be more of a school community sign. Do the non-for-profits want to donate any? Oh, I suspect you're going to see some, yes. Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Approved 2013-2014 district goals, recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2013-2014 district goals be approved as presented.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Approved revised 2013-2014 school calendar, recommended motion, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2013-2014 school calendar be revised as presented. Note, there will be no regular classes for grade nine through 12 during Regents Week, Monday, January 27th through Thursday, January 30th, there will be no regular classes for seventh and eighth grade, Wednesday, January 29th and Thursday, January 30th.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Approved existing, accessing of copy machine, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Conica 1010 copy machine COM DOC ID number 980AJ be accessed and disposed as the district deems necessary.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Approved transfer of funds, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, $2,003 be transferred from the capital repair fund restricted balance to the unassigned balance in the general fund as per the May 21st, 2013 budget proposition vote approving the catalytic converter work for the code generation plant.
Second.
Discussion? Would anyone like to hear what that's for?
Yes.
At our last meeting, we actually moved funds from our capital reserve to our general fund to pay for the work for the catalytic converter. The work was awarded to J.W. Danforth. In between that time and the work actually being done, we did receive an email from our attorneys stating that they wanted us to look into the fact of Siemens putting in the initial catalytic converter and, I'm just trying to find the right words here, making sure that we don't void our warranty and that we don't affect our performance incentives by having someone else do the work. So we did vet it with the companies, vet it with the attorneys, and what the attorneys had said is if Siemens oversees the work that's being done by Danforth, that we would be fine, our warranty would still be in place, and that their performance incentives would be untouched. So they wanted to get in writing from Siemens the fact that that would be the case. We did get that as of today, as a matter of fact, we have put that forward to our attorneys and to say, if you have any different read on that, let us know, otherwise we're going ahead with that and having the work done by the end of October, which we're required to.
So if I can piggyback off on that, this is a change in what has happened in the past where there was, what's the word I'm looking for?
Exclusivity?
Exclusivity, that Siemens had to do all the work and they don't. We just need to make sure that we're not violating any type of guarantee or warranty on the product. This is a big move.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Approved appropriations increase, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2013-2014 appropriations be increased by $4,550 to $25,733,388.92 to account for increased revenues. Note that the district received $710 from John Morrow for Masterminds and $3,840 from the Booster Club for the tournament officials.
Second. Discussion?
This is just actually a nomenclature thing, I know we discussed this at the previous board meeting, but this is the first time we're actually seeing the change of the phrase approved budget increase to approved appropriation increase. And again, the reason why is the voters vote on the budget. They passed the budget and they voted on 25, 730, or 720. So that is done, that is set for the year. As we get increased revenues, we can spend more, but we cannot touch the budget. That initial budget of 25, 720 stays the same, so when we look at next year, we start from that 25, 720, not from this higher amount that we actually see here. That's why we just have a wording difference.
Okay, thank you. I'd also like to thank John Morrow for his donation to the district so that we can run Masterminds and the Booster Club as well for the officials.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Appoint supplemental activity advisors and coaches for the 2013-2014 school year, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following personnel be appointed as supplemental activity advisors and coaches for the 2013-2014 school year, provided that these appointments will not be effect, will not be effective and service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And information and proposals from the administration and staff, Mark Vona? And Mark's going to talk about the Partnership for Smarter Schools.
Good evening, Mark Vona, welcome, he's a teacher at the elementary building, at the Main Street Building. I'm here to speak with you folks about Partnership for Smarter Schools, which is a group that is concerned with the effects that high-stakes testing is having on the education of our students, of our children, and the whole educational process. I'm hoping that I'm going to plant a couple seeds for you to think about and that maybe in the end, you may make a motion, maybe not right away, but after you've thought about it and looked at things and heard some information, that you may make a motion yourselves to a resolution like some of the other boards in the state. So I'm going to read, I've given you really what I'm going to read, but I'm going to go through it. I timed it, it's about nine minutes. I get 10 minutes. So I'm going to go through it, but I've also included in there some of the resolutions, examples, and a page on the partnership. So here I go. I'm here this evening to speak with you about the impact that New York State tests are having on the education of our children. You are all aware that I am the vice president of the ETA, but I'd like to state that there is no one in the ETA that has made me come here to make this presentation. I do it of my own accord and I stand here as Mark Vona. As a music teacher here at Eden for the past 23 years, I have gained a perspective that few in the other districts can claim. I come in contact with and I teach virtually every child that goes through the Main Street Building, although I do not, like a classroom teacher, get a class of students whom I see every day for the year. I do see all the students once a week in third and fourth grade, and then for the many choristers, more than that in fifth and sixth. I often elicit a completely different side of the student than the academic teacher as I work to reduce behaviors that develop in a child. I watch them grow. They all know Mr. Vona and I think they know that I am their advocate. It is important that it be made clear at the beginning of any discussion on this subject that I do not stand against the testing of students or the evaluation of teachers. The problem is that there are so many things wrong with how it's being done that as I discuss it, I will almost certainly cut across as though I'm against testing. So let me say here that there are no teachers, to my knowledge, who are against testing and neither am I. Testing students is something we do in education and is needed. And the evaluation of teachers is also vital to the educational system. My point here is that we need to get testing right and to use it for the right purposes. I'm going to end by asking the board to adopt a resolution that asks the New York State Board of Regents to stop the over-reliance on standardized tests as a measure of student performance and principal teacher effectiveness. Before I make that request, let me explain why I feel this way. Currently, the state tests third through eighth graders in math and ELA. The high stakes nature of these tests warps out of all proportion to the student's interest and educational needs. The schools add it towards, towards the importance of test-taking and these subjects. The overall curriculum is now heavily weighted to these two subjects and their curriculum is a mile wide and inch deep. Teachers are forced to keep moving even when they have a class that would prefer to delve more deeply into one area or another. There is no reason for state or national standards to tell teachers what percentage of their time should be devoted to literature or information because both can develop the ability to think critically. But they do. The curricular path is being prescribed by the state. Math and reading have always been germane to the education of children, hence the 19th century axiom, the three Rs. But when did it become true that one stops learning math or ELA the minute you walk out of a math or ELA class? That is simple-minded and not suited to the 21st century. In a quest to make all students better readers and/or better at math, we slight science, social studies, and the arts, truthfully, because they are not tested. This is Polly. Consider this, math and ELA are now taught to all students for extended time each day and yet a student who does not excel at math or ELA is made to spend still more time in the class he or she does not excel at. I have students who are not able to participate in my course because they are in need of RTI. I think Einstein's quote is appropriate here. "If you judge a fish by its ability to climb a ladder, it will live its whole life believing it is stupid." Of course, we should consider the top students, the students who will succeed pretty much no matter what the conditions are, the threes and the fours. I've heard some parents say they are not concerned because their child does well with it all. That is a mistake. You can turn off the good student and they will probably remain quiet about it. I have heard very good students deride school in a manner that I had never heard just five or 10 years ago. This came out in my class as we were writing blues lyrics. I got some of the most negative lyrics from some of the best students as they wrote the "I Hate School Blues." When we change the focus of secondary education to testing and passing tests, we send a message to our children. You see, focusing on doing well on tests is not the same as focusing on learning. The state groups the children through the test results into four categories. If a child falls into the lower two categories, he or she must receive RTI. This method of identifying students removes the people who know the child best from the decisions regarding such services. We now have so many students identified as in need of this extra help that in the Main Street Building, it has created havoc with our schedule. The schedules are broken up into small blocks that make little or no sense. This is the reason that my chorus time and the reach classes have been reduced in the last two years by 30 percent. The state test makers have hijacked our schedules. Adding insult to injury, the tests themselves are not used diagnostically to improve the education of our students. In fact, neither the teacher nor the parent ever sees the actual test results. No one knows what the student got right and what they got wrong. Teachers cannot use the results of the test to determine the student's strengths and weaknesses and adjust lessons. So we're left flying without a compass. Why are these tests held under lock and key? This all flies in the face of any good educational use of testing and on the face of it, it is wrong, especially when students are spending so much time and energy to prepare for the tests and take them. The tests themselves, which are linked to the Common Core standards, were developed by an organization called Achieve Incorporated. The National Governors Association was eventually called in to give the process the air of a public process. But there was minimal public engagement in the process and their creation was neither grassroots nor did it emanate from the states. Students are tested for three 90-minute sessions in each subject and by state law, these sessions are run like college entrance exams, even at the third grade level. A student may not talk or ask for any help other than sharpening a pencil and going to the bathroom. Teachers are reduced to monitors. You can be sure we'll do that job well as all of our APPR scores depend on it. The New York State tests are actually published by Pearson and it may be of interest that Pearson donates heavily to both political parties. We need to be concerned about the influence of corporate vendors on our public education policy. Unfortunately, this brings us to politics. This testing mania has been written into New York State legislation. The $4.35 billion extended to the states through the Race to the Top Initiative is attached to this legislation. So there's only one way to make a change in the path we are on and that is through the New York State Legislature. Currently, there is a group called the Partnership for Smarter Schools, which understands this problem and is trying to get the full story out there about these tests and their effects. I would recommend this group to anyone who wants to hear the other side of the story and boy, do we need another side of the story. The general public has a negative view of public education and has been led to believe it is failing. The results from these tests are being used to perpetuate this myth. That is the first step to knocking down the institution because if you believe something isn't working, you'll agree to eliminate it. So we need to get the story right. Only then can we stand on firm ground when we ask our legislators to change the testing legislation. I'm here tonight to ask the Eden Board of Education to consider adopting a resolution that shows our community does not agree with the over-reliance on standardized tests as a means of student performance or principal teacher effectiveness. There is no more politically effective time than now to do this. The state legislature is currently looking at a bill that concerns the Common Core standards and this testing. I believe this bill is slated to be voted on in January of next year. Resolutions such as those that I have suggested, adopted across the state would send a strong message to the legislature that we care about our children and our public education system and that they need to get testing right. Resolutions to this effect have already been adopted in other communities across the state. Raindown, Springville, Kenmore, Alden, Niagara, Wheatville, I should say Stark Point, excuse me, Northtown, Owanda, and West Seneca are among them. I have included a copy of some sample resolutions from other districts, but I encourage you to make your own. Please feel free to call me to discuss the information. Thank you so much for all the work you guys do in supporting us here at school and your continued commitment to Eden and children.
Mr. Vona, if you, if you get in there and you change this, let's say the politicians listen to you, what's your advice for the change? What do you want to, what do you want to make better?
I would like-
Just, I mean, just eliminate all the tests or, they're going to want something back.
They're going to, exactly, they're going to want to, they're going to want to put in, we do, and as I said, in here, we do need testing. Of course we need testing, we've always had it. We always had the SATs at the high school level. I think at the level they're doing it, the secondary level, when you start talking third, fourth, fifth, sixth graders, this kind of testing does not need to be done to the extent that it's been done. In other words, this amount of test work does not need to be done. So I would, I would ask them to reduce how much time we have to spend on it and reduce the amount of testing that's given to us within the school year. You all know what the strain is within the school day to try and get things done, to spend this much time on it, I think is just crazy at this level. I would ask why we can't see the tests? I mean, can anybody here stand up and give me a reason why, a logical reason, why the teachers or the parents can't see the results of the tests? I'm serious, if anybody can, please tell me. There is not one reason you can say why we should not be allowed to see those tests. There is not one reason you can say why we should not be allowed to see those tests. It doesn't make any sense. And I think on the face of it, that tells you what this is really about. And I think Pearson itself is benefiting from this greatly, and I think that might play into their ability to reuse things. I don't know. Republish the same test over and over? I don't know. But there's something there that's not got to do with our students and our kids.
Do you have any information that you had gotten specifically from the partnership summit that you went to?
Well, I guess I tried to cap some of it in here, but no, I certainly can get anything to you. I don't have that right here with me, no. I don't have the information from, I actually didn't take notes or anything at the summit. I just sat there and watched at the summit.
Did you find it, there's been a lot in the news about special interest groups. Did you find that there were special interest groups at the summit?
Well, at the summit, there were teachers and parents. And I know that everybody's aware of what happened with the commissioner.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
He's in hot water. Right. And by calling teachers and parents special interests, that's not the best way to put it. If you want to say that the teachers feel, as a group, feel strongly against the way the tests are being used, and you want to then take that angst and call it a special interest, I guess you can. But no, I don't think teachers and parents are a special interest.
Wouldn't we all be in that group because these are our children?
I think you guys, as board members and supporters of public education, could end up getting coined the same thing. Even students could be called a special interest. You know, if you start voicing your own opinion about what something is, you become a special interest. Well, that's not how it works. So that I think, and The Washington Post spelled it out, he made a faux pas there, didn't But honestly, anything hits your mind, I think you should discuss it and take time with it, and anything else, I'd be glad to even research for you if I didn't have the answer in my back pocket.
Mr. Vona, this is bigger than just New York State, isn't it? This is a, Common Core is a national thing, and New York State is just trying to cope with that and implement Common Core as best they can. Is that, and how's the other states are doing?
Yes, and actually, it's more than even national. It is international. If you've been, I mean, just last month in Mexico City, teachers were rioting, and they were knocking down with fire hoses, and some of the issues were exactly the same that we're dealing with. So there's forces that are pushing this on globally. And yes, I think New York State is trying to jump on and make sure that it follows along with what's happening around them. We have, we're one of the states that have the best public education in this country, and I actually think we're one of the states that may be lowering our standards in order to follow along. Here's two examples right here.
But the goal is to raise the standards, and you disagree with the methods.
I disagree that actually, I'm suspicious that they're actually raising standards, okay? And I just, and yes, I disagree with the method they're using in testing like this. You can go back to the 1800s in this country, and I think it was 1906, there was this same discussion in Congress, and some very smart senators stood up and said, "You can't do this with education. It's going to warp it." And I'll find that conversation, but it's not new.
But the motives are positive. The motives are, they're trying to improve things and raise our standards, but I see that there's disagreement here in using perhaps too much tests. Is that true?
Yes, yeah, they're making, I'm not going to totally say that there aren't positive motives there, although I do hold publishing companies who hold the rights, who are in a position that they could publish tests for the entire nation.
Now, they are a special interest.
They are, they're a special interest. So you've got to watch what they're doing with it, and they have so, you know, the one-man-one-vote thing is dying with the rip-offs of...
Can I just help you out in a second? Just to answer your question, Mr. Campbell, New York State and Kentucky were the only two states that decided to start testing, using these types of tests around the Common Core this year. There's 45 states, plus the District of Columbia, who have adopted Common Core, but they have decided to wait and work on curriculum and teaching and implementing the Common Core standards before they did this. And then they are going to either use the PAR tests, or there's the other consortium of testing. But New York State and Kentucky were the only ones who did this amount of testing at this point in time, which is why New York State isn't in this uproar, why not just teachers, but administrators and school superintendents, school boards, and parents have decided to get together and investigate why we are using these types of tests. And Mr. Vona didn't know that because he's new to teacher.
And Colin, I do want to add to that, that Patty and I had gone to the PTA meeting, and the PTA, the new PTA president that we have, Tiffany Quoz, has done an excellent job on the PTA, and the PTA is behind this. So that's where you get a lot of the parents that are being informed and educated on what's happening.
So basically, what I actually just heard also, too, was there's pros and cons to the Common Core, but how quickly New York State has hurried up and rushed the implementation of this program into our school districts, that's where there's, our teachers aren't prepared.
It causes students to be unprepared also.
You're not, we're not prepared for it. So it's kind of like, there was a hearing today, and the superintendent of Williamsville actually said, "It's like we're building a plane while we're flying it, and that is what we're expected and mandated to do." That's very, very frustrating, and I see exactly where you're coming from.
Yes, for me.
Budget advisory team?
Yes, two things to report on. Budget advisory team being the first one there. I just wanted to give a status update on budget advisory team. We are moving full steam ahead with the BAT team. Our first meeting would be scheduled prior to the next board meeting, so in November, at 5:45 to 6:45. That would leave us 15 minutes prior to the start of the next board meeting. The budget advisory team meetings are going to take place. We're still working logistically on this to see if it's either going to be on the other side of the partition, or still over here, but we're still working on that logistically of how to best videotape that, get the audio for it, and make that as public a form as possible. And let me just log back in here. I will tell you the makeup of the committee and what we're actually looking at. We had talked about, again, just to bring everyone up to speed, the budget advisory committee would be made up of all of you as board members. But again, part of the purpose is to get a broad, cross-spectrum, basically, of the community and community opinions. So this would also include community members as well as union leaders as well. So in terms of last meeting, we put the call out there for anyone who was interested to please let us know from the community perspective who would want to be involved. We have four community members who, or actually, three have agreed to be on it. Fourth person we put on is an alternate, and I'll talk about that in a second. So Jen Holsher, Don Johnson, and Richard Minikheim have agreed to be on it as community members. I've never had a chance to meet them yet, but what I will do prior to the first budget advisory team meeting is meet with each one of them individually, tell them a little bit about the budget advisory process, the fact that it is something brand-new for this community. I do expect, I'll tell you right now, that as we're going through this, it's the first time we're doing this. Is it going to be perfect? Probably not, but that's okay. I mean, part of this is to let the community know what is a budget, what's included in the budget, and again, what are some of your ideas with the budget. The budget ultimately rests with this Board of Education, and the community members who have agreed to be on it understand that and realize that in crafting a budget, it's very difficult to craft a budget in just for one or two people, or in a room, or on your own, or however you want to look at it, you really need as many minds to come together as possible, especially as resources get tighter. You know, you may not think of something that someone has a great idea on. So to bring all those people together to say, "What are some thoughts and ideas that people have?", that's part of the committee itself. And all of them have said, yes, it is something they're willing to do, to learn about the budget, understand, ask intelligent questions about it as well, and then also, at the end of the day, to go out into the community when this process is said and done and hopefully support the budget that this board is actually recommending to the voters. So fortunately, we had more people respond than what we had expected, so what we've asked is for over three to be on an alternate list. The reason why? For us to get work done, you can only have so large a committee to really be effective as a committee. I mean, if you have 30 people in the committee, you're never going to get done what you need done in an hour. So it should be an exciting process. As board members, two guys have, first of all, questions before the process begins. Now, we'll go in detail at the first meeting, what the, you know, how the structure's going to look at, but immediate questions that you guys have. Okay? This should be something to look forward to, so I think it's going to be a great process. And then, second, Affordable Care Act. Just an update on what we're looking at for the Affordable Care Act. I was at a business officials' meeting today, and this is one of our large topics that we're actually discussing. I'm sure everyone has heard by this point, there's been a lot of back and forth between Congress and the president, you know, provisions for the Affordable Care Act. At this point, it appears that the Affordable Care Act will be moving forward. The provisions, or many of the provisions, have been pushed back for one year, so that would push us basically to January of 2015. What does that mean for school districts? Our school year starts July of 2014. That'll take us into the January 2015 implementation date. So we, as a school district, need to be ready, prepared, to roll with this by July 1st of 2014. We are still working, getting actual legal counsel advice on this, because if you don't, the ramifications financially to a district are extreme. As an example, we could be paying, we could, if we did not implement this and really take to heed what the Affordable Care Act says, could be fined about $500,000 in one year. That is an extreme amount we obviously clearly want to avoid, so we're taking every step we can to make sure we're implementing this as judiciously and as wisely as possible. So that's why, as I said, we're checking with the legal counsel on that, and we will be prepared. As we phase this in, you will start to see a phase-in process this year, and the reason why a phase-in process, the recommendation is, you need to do that now, because by July 1, you have to have your bugs worked out. If you begin the process by July 1, you are way behind the eight ball. So the recommendation from every attorney is start it during the school year. So that is what we're actually moving towards, and as we get more definition, this will be a topic we discuss, I'm sure, frequently here. Questions?
Lots.
So more fun for that.
Superintendent's report?
I like mine better. I'm going to start with number two, which is Homecoming Week. We had a great time, didn't we, guys? What a lot of fun. I see them in the back. Yes, thank you. Lot of people, thank you. The one with the great smile in the back, thank you. Tractor day, it was Mr. Servellini's first, and my first, and Mr. Murphy got to ride on one, and who would ever believe that our Spanish teacher, Mr. Neal, had never been on a tractor? Go figure that one out. So we've got some great shots that Mrs. Karstedt showed us, let us see before the board meeting, and maybe if we have some time, they can go back up afterwards for people to see it. The seniors came through loud and clear that they were going to have a bonfire on their timing and not anybody else's, and we will certainly make sure that next year that there is no preemptive bonfire. And Raider Fest was just an absolute wonderful venture by student council, so I want to thank you guys. It was everything that I would have hoped for if I had planned it. It included the younger kids, it included people from the community, and it showed that Homecoming Week is about everybody and not just about high school. And so I want to thank student council for coming up with the idea and carrying it through in such a great way. And I heard you guys are going to make it even bigger next year, right? Do you want to say anything about that?
Well, actually, we'll be graduated, but...
But you could come back.
Right. Well, of course, we'll be there, but I think the next generation will be able to put upon it.
What was your favorite part of the day?
Favorite part of the day? It was probably winning the football game.
Good job, Mrs. Felcaro. Actually, we had a 6th grade student, Jessica Hall Singh, too. She was incredible, and I was so proud of our students who were up on the top of the bleachers, who recognized the value in this whole K-12 experience. So just a really, really great week, and my first, so it was great. And another feel-good story news is Operation Recognition. I'm going to speak from a personal perspective, because the last two districts that I worked in, the districts had not built their high school until either the early or the late 1970s, and so during the Vietnam War, there weren't any students who would have graduated from those schools, not Williamsville East or Grand Island. So Eden, because our high school was built much sooner than that, actually had a student who left the high school in 1961 to go into the Marines, and his name is Kent Willis. Operation Recognition was a program that was started a few years back to allow school districts, the home school district, not where they live now, but where they did live when they left, to go into the service to award them with a diploma. And so at the November 20th meeting, we will be awarding Kent Willis with a high school diploma. So that's really, really, really exciting. Buffalo news, thank you, Mrs. Kreischer. We'll be here to ask him some great questions, and hopefully we'll see it in the news. Hamburg Sun has come. I've reached out to some of the Channel 2, 4, and 7 to see if they would like to, and American Legion has already accepted. So as the town supervisor, and I'm playing phone tag with VFW, but this is a big deal, big deal. So I'm really glad to have that happening.
Did Kent say if he's going to walk at the end of the year?
Do you know, I didn't ask him, but I think it's certainly a conversation to have with our seniors in the Board of Education as to whether we would want to invite him to graduation to wear a cap and gown, and so that would be fun.
Can I just say I like the superintendent's report much better than mine, too?
I have the greatest job. I'm done. That's all I have.
The board report. Student insurance, Patty Kraus.
I had inquired last month about reinstating the student insurance. Tom has gotten some information. It is obviously not going to happen during this school year budget, which is unfortunate, but it is something we definitely need to highly consider within the next school budget. If you could just give the information that you have found out so far.
Absolutely. So my knowledge on this is that we, as a district, did offer this several years ago, about three years ago, and it was dropped as a cost-saving measure for the district as budgets got tighter. The cost to the district at that time was about $15,000, and that was based on, just like any other insurance, our claims at the time. I was at, as I said, a business official meeting today. I asked that question to all of the business officials, saying, "Which districts do offer the student insurance? Which ones don't?" All but one actually did raise their hand and say they did offer the insurance. All but one. And when I asked...
And how many were there?
There were about 15 districts represented. And from that, I asked how much they paid for it. None of them paid $15,000. And I think part of that reason is we're actually one of the larger districts represented at those meetings, so that's one. But again, number two, it's based on claims as well. So some range from a couple hundred dollars to some, I think the highest one I saw was about $12,000. So we have actually gone to our insurance company. We've asked them to price out for us different policies that would be out there for it. Our insurance company does not offer it directly, so they would actually have to third-party that out to us. We do not now have what would be known as like an experience rating or claims history now, since we haven't done it for a couple of years, so I'm not sure where that actually will put the price for us. So will it be $15,000 again? Not sure. But as I find out, I will let you know, and then we can... But as I find out, I will let you know, and then we can put that in as possible budget item for next year as well.
Thank you.
Okay?
On a personal note, in 2005, when the school actually did have that insurance, our family used that because my son, during recess, snapped his two front teeth. And as a family, we did not and still do not have dental insurance. And I'm sorry, but having a fifth grader walk around with two snapped front teeth would not have flu. So we're very grateful that the school actually carried that insurance. So I do find it important, especially if any of our kids get injured during sports or recess or whatever.
And just to let the board know as well, there are a couple options here. There are actually one of three options you can take. Number one, don't offer insurance. Number two, offer insurance. Or the third is, you can pay the difference of the claims from what the family's able to afford versus what the actual cost for the treatment would be as well. Of the districts that I spoke to today, that's the option that one district did. They just paid the overage on the claims. They did not tell me how much that costs annually. My guess is, if you have a high year with a lot of claims, it's going to cost you probably more than the 15. If you have a light year, you might get under. But that's an option as well that you just want to know.
Thank you. Student privacy and state testing, Patty Kraus.
All right. I'm actually going to be giving a report on the Partnership for Smarter Schools Summit that did take place earlier this month. I was actually unable to go to that summit, but I have notes that were taken and just different high points that were made at this summit. So these are all points that the Partnership for Smarter Schools had made at this summit. One being that the data really isn't telling us what we need to know. Also, teachers have not been adequately trained for the new testing or standards. The testing is too long, at the wrong time of the year, and not used diagnostically. Also, teacher evaluation should not be tied to the student data. Also, there's too much reliance on the New York State Education Department on these assessments. There's too much time being devoted to test prep. That testing will narrow the curriculum and cause constraints on scheduling. There's also a concern that it's just too much, too fast, being implemented into our schools. There's a heightened level of anxiety in our students and the teachers. Testing has changed the focus of education because of the way it's being done and how it's being used. Parents and teachers need to be, well, not necessarily teachers because they're in this, but need to be informed about what is actually being implemented, how quickly it is. Some parents don't care, but the parents that do care were getting conflicting information. And if you read the New York Times, the Washington Post, I have a pile here of just articles on pros and cons of this concept, of this testing. Like Mark had told us, there are several school districts within just the Erie County that have already adopted a resolution regarding these tests. And I feel as though it is an excellent idea for us to be on board as a board, letting our legislators know that we understand testing has to be done, but how it's being done is not necessarily what's best for our children. So I am asking that we highly consider a resolution. I had sent you an email with that resolution. Mark has one right here in the pamphlet that he had given you. He has already gone over and told you Alden, Grand Island, Hamburg, Kenmore, Tonawanda, Orchard Park, Springville, Griffith, West Seneca, and there was another one on your list that I didn't have. Star Point, yes. So I definitely, you know, this is something that we really need to either vote on next month, have discussion about, but get this resolution into place. As far as the student privacy and the whole data dashboard, I was going to read what the partnership had to say. But today, streaming live, there was a public hearing on the regents reform agenda assessing our progress. So this was in Buffalo. There were several, several, my gosh, I should have counted them. I'm going to say about 100 people that spoke from various different school districts, superintendents, school board members, principals, PTA, Chamber of Commerce. I can show anybody that wants to see this list. Hopefully, they have it recorded because there was extreme information that was given on this thing. I'm so sick of politics, it's not even funny. But anyways, the one person that spoke, his name is Mark D. Beeler, and he is the Vice President of the Empire State Administrators Association, and he works in West Seneca. This has to do with the InBloom system. And actually, it's really, really long, but I find it relevant to what's going on and what we are being mandated to do with this system. We already have in place a database. To make this all really short, when you're getting, we chose InBloom, all fine and good. But now we have to...
We didn't choose them.
Oh, we didn't choose them yet? If we choose them?
We have to.
Let me just clarify.
Okay, go ahead.
We choose a data dashboard.
Okay.
The data dashboard is simply a portal to home. What we currently do is we feed information to BOSIs, and that information is private, but it's not encrypted. InBloom is the middle man in between. It will then encrypt that information and send it to New York State.
Okay.
So we do send information to New York State now, it just doesn't have InBloom in the middle.
Okay. So then basically, after it gets to InBloom, for us to get that information back, and this is according to, he works with all this data, we have to pay to get that data back using InBloom, which, that's $2 to $5 per student. It's not state-funded. We're going to end up having to come up with that money somewhere, somehow. I have no idea where that money is going to be coming from.
You're looking at me, why?
Yeah, exactly. It makes absolutely no sense, it makes no sense to this man, why we have to use this InBloom service. Also, so there's a huge money issue whenever it comes to the InBloom. And then also, too, the whole uproar of privacy. During these hearings today, yes, there's safeguards, but yet because of the third-party vendors and things, you know, that's where the information can, I know you can't live by what-ifs, but if that information did get out, then we're liable for that as a school district. So on another proposal, which is actually being done in Colorado by the superintendent at the Jefferson County School, she is in the process right now of having the option for parents to opt out their children, their information into this data dashboard. We have that as a school district, it's just that one extra InBloom part where I feel as though, as a board, to safeguard and to be proactive. If parents want to opt out of this, they don't feel as though that is the right path that they want to bring or put their children's records into, they should have the parental right to opt their children out of this system. As with these New York State standard tests, there's nothing within the New York State laws that says children can opt out of these tests. But guess what? These parents are opting their kids out. They do have that right to do that. So I feel as though that if a parent doesn't want their child in the system like that with this InBloom data dashboard, they have the right to do that. That's my report.
We, as a board, though, don't have that power to do that, right?
No, so currently in New York State, there is no means for school districts to pull certain students' data out and only send other data forward. There are other states that have adopted different legislation where they can, but New York State right now is pushing forward on all student data going. Although there is some conversation that has begun for New York State to take a look at that because it's been a big conversation.
But can we limit the types of data?
You know, right now, it's stating the types of data that are going forward, although there is conflicting information on that as well, and Patty and I have had some conversation about that. So as soon as that settles down, I would go onto Engage New York and take a look, and you'll see the data type that is going forward. So in terms of demographics, where I think that there's some misleading or wrong information is in particular data about a student that we don't even keep. So there's no way we could possibly send that forward. So we don't, in our records, keep information about a student's being jailed or that, but yet there's some information out there that schools would be sending that out. There's not a means to do that.
I think there are some real privacy concerns because essentially, you have this huge database that's collecting information about our kids. And we don't know who's going to have access to it, how it's going to be used, and they're not answering those questions. So I have some real concerns about the privacy of it right now, too. And I was going to suggest that we discuss that at the next Legal and Policy Committee meeting and see how, if any, how, if any way, we could address that as a district.
Yeah, couldn't we put it maybe into policy, that even parents could opt out? I mean, that could be in our actual school board policy.
Well, working within state law, but I thought, and the information that you had provided, and I thought that was good information, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I thought that, and unfortunately, I didn't bring it with me, but I thought that there was some reference to districts limiting what types of information could go to the database, that at least you'd be able to do that. For example, disciplinary information, that you could say, that's not going to go to the database.
We currently do not send student names forward, it's just simply a summary for VADER as to, you know, students with weapons, harassment, bullying, but the names are not embedded into our computer system, and that would not be something we would do.
How does that work? When we enter a disciplinary form into the system, we put a student's name on it? Is it re-entered before the data is sent?
No, we just send a summary. So ones, zeros, fives, sixes within every category for VADER. That's all we do.
So it's a report that is sent out each year?
No, it's sent out once a year.
Oh, once a year.
Mm-hmm. It doesn't include any student names on it.
I do have one more thing. One of the men that spoke today at this hearing, he had this great quote, which not only can be applied to the testing, but also even the data dashboard. Here's his quote. It says, "When we define the worth of our children solely by that which can be measured, then their worth becomes measurement itself. Their life is no longer their own, and the owner of that measurement dictates child's worth." I don't want that for my kid, and I don't want them to be just a measurement. And I don't want that for any student within this district to feel that way, or a parent to feel that that's what their child has been reduced to.
Patty, can you go tell me again about InBloom? Is it being mandated, or are they asking us to go to this third party?
Let me tell you.
I'm going to let Sandy answer that, but we are being mandated that we have to go to a dashboard, correct?
So every district in New York State has to choose a dashboard that's not InBloom. Three companies came forward on an RFP, and we chose one. We chose what we felt was an easy-to-read dashboard. It is free to the districts. We don't have to pay for it. As of 2015, right, Lucinda? As of 2015, districts do have to pay, that's the $2 to $5 that you're speaking about per student, for the use of InBloom. But districts at that point don't need to use a dashboard. I suspect between now and 2015 that there's going to be lots and lots of variations on all of this. The InBloom itself, if you go up onto Engage New York and just in the search button, type "InBloom," has the legal language, Colin, that's probably where you saw some of it as well, the legal language behind the agreement of InBloom. From an attorney's perspective, it might be interesting at some point to put Colin on the spot to see, you know, what he's reading into it. It's different than if you go to Partnership for Smarter Schools, or if you go to any of these other websites that include information. Right now, InBloom has signed an agreement that it won't be able to sell that information, but that's also being disputed by people. So at this point, I would defer to our school attorney and Colin for the legal language of what's happening with InBloom. But they're just simply the middle man to encrypt the information and send it forward so that educators don't have to go to 15 different sites to get the same information. That's really what it's about.
Is that $2 to $5 per student state aid? Is that going to be brought through?
You know, I haven't received any information on that yet, Tom, have you?
I don't believe it is.
Yeah.
One statement that this man had said, I will read this. It said, "I recently spoke with one of the data dashboard vendors and learned that they can give us the same product with Level 1 data, meaning they do not need InBloom to produce a data dashboard product. Why must RTTT funding be expended on data that is already present in our RICs? Why must every district in the state that cooperated and agreed to RTTT pay InBloom for a service that could be provided by the existing data flow structure? Why must between $5.2 million and $13.5 million be paid to InBloom every year for something that can be done already by our existing structure, for data that we already have? Couldn't we reinvest those funds into our existing structure to build systems that more accurately meet local needs?" This was in his...
I think it's one of the biggest questions because there is conversation down the road, I'm going to keep looking at Lucinda for when I say it wrong, okay, that there may be an opportunity down the road for that to occur. What's happening right now is that it's so cumbersome, yes, to send this information out.
Right now, there's only a couple of us that can access it at that level, and then we basically print reports and give it to people, to submit it to teachers. My understanding is that it's actually going to be like protecting this bottleneck and funneling it back out. Every parent's going to be able to go to Engage New York because of our dashboard and get an account to see if there's a child. Right now, there's no good way for me to give you that information.
And we also can't encrypt it. Right. So as we get more information on this, we'll keep bringing that information to you as well. Although the last meeting that Lucinda and I were in, there was some conversation about even just some of our own student management systems being able to push that through, but right now, they're not capable of doing that.
And building usage fees, Colin?
Yeah, this pertains to building usage by outside groups, and it's something that we've discussed in the past and really didn't come to any resolution, just kind of got kicked down the road. But my understanding is that we're one of only a few districts in the area that does not charge outside groups to use their facilities. In these times, I don't think we have the luxury of being able to overlook any potential sources of revenue. So I would propose that we, as a board, ask our administrators to come up with a proposal, a plan of building use fees for outside groups, rates and so forth. Rates and so forth to be determined. I would also ask that there be built into such a plan the possibility of a waiver of the charges for non-for-profit groups and/or groups that have significant numbers of our community youth participating. And those groups could apply for a waiver for any fee. So perhaps the administration could work on something and then bring it back to the next meeting for our discussion and possible approval.
Could you define for me outside groups?
Non-school groups.
Okay.
So like a men's basketball team?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Does that sound okay with everybody?
Sure.
And I have one other thing. We have not done any capital project in, I don't know, at least several years, if not longer. And I know that we have postponed maintenance and improvements. And I also know that we just adopted a goal that, the first goal, which was to have a pretty short-term plan to look at the district as a whole and try to determine what we would need in terms of building and planning improvements. So might it be prudent at this time if we also ask the administration to look at the district as a whole and come back with a wish list, so to speak, of recommendations of potential capital project proposals for the entire district? I think it's necessary to do that at this time also because there's no, I think there's currently still state reimbursement at around 80% for such projects, and we don't know how long that's going to be there.
I'm sorry. Say that again.
Is there still the state reimbursement of 80% for capital projects?
There is reimbursement. It's not necessarily 80%. There are a lot of factors that determine what your reimbursement rate is. But you are right, there is still that loophole for the reimbursement, and that eventually is going to be closing. So they haven't said when. In fact, we are well past when they said they were going to close it. So I don't know when that's actually going to be.
Okay. So that's not going to be there forever. And I also know that these things take a long time to plan and get approved and implement and get out to the voters, right? I mean, we're talking once, if not more than a year, to do anything like that. So I think it would be prudent if we at least ask the administration at this point to make some recommendations to us in that regard. Is that okay with everybody?
Were our buses, I'm forgetting, what happened with our buses? Were we-
That was separate than, I think, what he's talking about.
That's something that we agreed we would take up as part of the budget process.
Okay.
And I think the consensus is going to be that we definitely have to do something about the buses, too.
But separate process.
Separate from capital.
Correct. It's considered capital, but different. Totally different structure.
Okay.
The first goal, and I did put it up on the board behind me, which is to approve a three-year written plan to guide facility changes and improvements. One of the objectives that was in our conversation when the consultant came to talk with the board was by January to have a needs assessment in front of the board. And so that could include that wish list, too, that can come forward to you so that priorities could be driven. Some conversation that's already been had by me with the administrators is to come forward to the staff of Eden and the teachers about just creating a wish list in general because there's a lot of conversation, and there's never going to be that pot of gold to carry them all. So I think it's going to be incumbent on us to take a look at this and you as a board to say, what is a priority? And what are the teachers and the staff and the students saying to you?
Yeah, I think as a school board, we've been living in the present and just trying to survive a little too much, and now it's time to look down the road a little bit. I think we have that responsibility.
I appreciate you bringing this forward, Colin.
That's all I have.
And Patty, on the resolution, probably for next month, then, over this month, me and you can set up something and have that ready for next month.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Yep, thank you.
I do have a question on the resolution. When you make a resolution, how is it going to get to the legislator? How does it go? What's the process? How does it get to the legislature?
I don't know. But I will find out with you.
And how much power does it hold? How much weight does it have?
None, really. It just sends a message to them.
Correct. It doesn't change any of the mandates, but it does send a message.
Who's going to receive it? That's what I'm wondering.
It would be our state senator in the Assemblyman.
Okay. All right. Future dates? Regular Board of Education meeting, Wednesday, November 20, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. at the cafeteria.
Could I make a recommendation that at about quarter to 7, which I think is at the end of your BAT meeting, that I bring some refreshment so that if Kent Willis, who is the gentleman receiving the diploma, comes, that it's more of a little gathering even before the business as usual with the board? If you're all right?
Sounds nice.
I might be early, then I won't have to do the speaking.
You won't have to do what?
I might be early, then.
Okay. I'll bring food. Quarter to 7.
Executive session, that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the possibility of creating a contract.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion carries.
Thank you for coming.